Welcome one, welcome all. We're going to get started with our informal session. Mr. Haney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Mayor, I should request the Hampton Roads, Hampton Roads Community Chaplaincy Program will come and give City Council a briefing on their program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and good afternoon. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and esteemed members of the council. And I would also like to thank Cintia students for coming to support. I am Dr. Vicky Brown, President of Cintia Institute for Christian Studies. It is deed a privilege, and it is an honor to be in your presence. And thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedules to allow us to come and present our proposal to you. Dr. Timon Moore will give you the mayoral presentation for our proposal. Dr. Moore?
And welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Brown. My name is Dr. Timon Moore.
We need you in front of the microphone.
I am Dr. Timon Moore. I'm the Vice President of Cintia Institute for Christian Studies. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit exempt institution that has acquired accreditation through IACET, which is the Distance Learning Accreditation Organization that is approved and accredited through the United States Board of Education. And we are here to present our community chaplaincy program. And throughout this brief presentation, we're going to talk about these four things. We're going to talk about who we are as an institution and what it is that we are looking to present to the city of Virginia Beach. We're going to talk about our ask and offerings and our desire as serving as conduance and the ministry of presence within the community of Virginia Beach. Who are we? Our motto is that we stand where, I'm sorry, where knowledge is pivotal in each step towards success. We believe, based on our understanding and the foundation of the scripture, that people perish for the lack of knowledge, that knowledge is valuable. And one of the things that we stand for as an institution is to be ones who are educators who impart wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, not just from the Christian perspective, but from the supportive clinical perspective of clinical pastoral care, crisis intervention training, as well as crisis incident stress management training. We offer certifications and trainings in these fields for our chaplains, and we serve to provide community chaplain services for communities. Our mission and the philosophy of our ministry at Cintia is to serve as a ministry of presence for those who understand the foundations of chaplaincy ministry. A chaplain's role primarily is to provide comfort in the incidence of crisis, to be able to be a voice of peace, consoling, comforting, informing, but also setting the standard for being available and serving communities as well as first responders in those crisis incidents. Our chaplains will be trained in things such as dealing death notices. We have many chaplains who work within hospice centers now and palliative care. We deliver eulogies at funerals and work with funeral homes. And we'll be talking a little bit more about that as we get into our presentation. Our charge as a ministry is that we're more than just academics. We are really trying to change the face of how chaplaincy ministry has been presented throughout the city. I know a lot of chaplains are just located within institutions of healing, like hospice centers or hospitals. But the chaplaincy program that we're trying to present is one that affects and impacts the municipality just as much as it helps those who are in crisis. We want to help combat the ignorance of misplaced dogma because there is a mindset around certain Christian faith that there is a dogma or a stigma that tolerance or acceptance of people in their alternative lifestyles or the way that they live is a way that creates a separation or conflict to where they're feeling rejected and unloved. But we are training our chaplains to come with the ministry of love and presence, to serve all people from all walks of life for healing, reconciliation, and support. And this is one of the foundational principles of the Cintia Chaplain Ministry Training. We offer providing a ministry of presence, being available, being aware, and being within the communities to serve the communities, community citizens as well as first responders, being friends to the community, and potentially serving as a bridge to help mend or bridge those community divides when there may be civil unrest or circumstances within the community where law enforcement or the municipality is not necessarily being received so that we can serve as community chaplains, go into that community, build relationships with those communities, and share as, serve as ambassadors to bring everybody to the table for those conversations. We want to be here to serve as a bridge and ensure that no one is taxed as they try to come across. So our ask, because we want to be very forward with what it is that we're asking, we want to have access and an opportunity to provide community and municipal chaplains and service training for current chaplains that are being hired by the city. Because we are accredited in clinical pastoral education, and we are going to have sound curriculum around crisis intervention training as well as crisis incident stress management, a lot of these certifications and trainings are ones that are required by police chaplaincy. But we also want to offer it for chaplains to be able to serve first responders like our fire department, first responders like EMS systems, right? Because these servants also are dealing with crisis circumstances. They're seeing death, they're seeing violence at a high level, and we want to be able to have chaplains that understand that support and be able to support them holistically with the same training that our police chaplains have. We are asking for a grant of $150,000 to start and invest in this program. We are 501(c)(3), so this grant would be provided to a nonprofit organization. And with these funds, we're planning on being able to establish foundations in a facility. If that includes a facility, if there is some space within the city that we could utilize to set up a base of operations locally within the Virginia Beach area, we would truly appreciate that opportunity. But we want to serve and be able to provide training for as many of the municipal trainees who want to enter into chaplaincy, as well as trained chaplains who have a desire to serve in that capacity. One of the things we want to offer, based on that financial funding, is offer four to 10 students per every training cycle. Our training cycles are 15 weeks. So our 15-week cycle for an initial certification in clinical pastoral education training and the foundations of chaplaincy, in which we teach crisis intervention, we teach substance abuse management, we teach psychological crisis intervention management, stress management are a part of our curriculum offerings. And we want to be able to offer that where it says crisis incident training, crisis, I'm breaking down the acronyms, crisis incident stress management, or clinical pastoral education certification, which is required by chaplains who work in hospitals, right? We want, we offer continuing education credits as well that can be applied to degree opportunities at other schools because we are accredited by IACET through Clinical Pastoral Education International. We are an affiliate school that has that accreditation, so we can offer continuing education credits with every course that we offer to those who come and attend the school. We also want an opportunity to provide a funnel of trained and certified chaplains to serve in our local municipalities. You know, not every chaplain that has served has had substantial training. Some of our chaplains are volunteers. But those who have the knowledge and understanding of pastoral care, who have the understanding of crisis incident stress management, are more effective at being able to serve in those capacities and have an understanding of how to maneuver in stress-filled environments. There's an asterisk next to where we are offering four to 10 students for city, for city students to come per cycle. That can grow as our funding grows, as our curriculum offerings grow, and our staff grows. We'll be able to serve a larger number of students if those opportunities present themselves. But per cycle, because we can get usually three to four cycles within a year, we would offer four to 10 slots for students for you guys to send people to us. Our desire and hope is to build a strong relationship with the municipal leaders within the cities of Virginia Beach, and hopefully that this will be a catalyst to inform and open it up to all of the seven cities of Hampton Roads. We really want to impact the community in a way that serves them holistically, providing the right type of care. All of our chaplains are also FEMA certified. We take FEMA certifications for crisis incident management so that if there is a natural disaster, if there is a major fire, our chaplains understand how to maneuver in those environments. And if this is an opportunity for us, we would like to be that source of funneling and even create municipal opportunities for employment for chaplains where we can maybe even enter into social services. You know, we found in some states where our chaplains have been trained that some of them were social workers and have become the chaplains for their social services departments. And so we want to kind of break the diaspora of thought and intersect ourselves, injecting ourselves in more ways that we can serve the community in municipal foundations and functions. And finally, the strategy is that it has a great potential to bridge those social-political divides within our communities. We've had many situations with unrest and violence within certain communities, and what we're trying to do is serve as feet on the ground, building relationships in these communities and with our first responders so that in those circumstances, we can potentially be the bridge, and like I stated, that conduit of reconciliation by being a voice of peace, consideration, and compassion to bring us all to the table to communicate, based on the foundations of the golden rule, to do unto others as we would have them to do unto This is a little quick bullet point of our vision, serving the municipality by supporting whatever initiatives that you guys have. If chaplaincy and the presence of a chaplain can add value to some initiatives you're already having, we would like to be a part of that, creating opportunities for chaplain roles within the municipal marketplace, as I stated, courts, firehouse, social services, and the like, bridging the gap as community chaplains by serving as a point of contact for community crisis intervention whenever sensitive issues arise. And finally, in serving the people, crisis intervention, because we are designed to be people who can assist in reducing PTSD from crisis. We understand that by understanding Maslow's hierarchy of self-actualization, meeting people's needs physically, meeting that emotional need to feel safe and comforted, these are some of the tools that our chaplains have been empowered in. Emotional and psychological support by being there for our first responders in crisis situations, fires, shootings, accidents, and being a voice and a presence. And then making sure that we are also in the buildings for our first responders as well, whenever there's a need, doing ride-alongs and some of the things that current police chaplains do with the other municipal first responders, I think would be a huge value add as well. And so in conclusion, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here, to present to you all, for you all to hear our proposal and proposition, and understand our passion and desire to serve the community at large, particularly our community in crisis and our first responders who pretty much every day presents a crisis incident that they need to be supportive in dealing with. I now open up the floor for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. And before I take a question, if I could just say, one of the reasons, you know, I requested at least, you know, these folks to come in and talk to us, I am involved with a 757's mayor youth violence task force. And one of the things that the city managers got together and do, they put together a fishbone diagram outlining a number of the causal effects of, you know, what, you know, facilitates youth violence. And once again, one of the things, there are options that people are trying to get into the communities. And, you know, and I thought that this might be of value because I may very well want to bring you in front of our task force the next time that we convene, because we have, you know, the people that, once again, the boots-on-the-ground concept of, you know, getting into at-risk communities and things of that nature. And, you know, and then when we talk about things, even what we're doing with the whole pipeline, you know, about mental health and mentoring programs and, you know, things of that nature. But, you know, once again, we got a very safe city, but once again, there's always room for the potential for, you know, further interventions that, you know, could really, you know, strengthen some of the community bonds. Any questions or concerns at this point? Yeah, Chris?
Thanks, Mayor Dyer. Thank you for the presentation. The mayor mentioned this is kind of coming out of a regional brainstorming session and workflow. How many of our neighbors, neighboring cities are you all currently under contract with these type of services?
No, this would be the first. Cintia Institute for Christian Studies has been in existence since April of this year. However, we have already trained two classes. We actually have some students who came today just to be in our presentation. But in this short time, we've also gained accreditation. We are one of the only, actually, we are the only seminary in the state of Virginia that actually has accreditation for continued, for clinical pastoral education. And we want to make sure we're impacting, we're meeting with the Baptist Convention this month. We're also going to several other pastoral councils to present ourselves because we want to grow the presence of chaplains within the state of Virginia and the community. When we presented ourselves, because we sent letters to all of the mayors and even some law enforcement leaders, Mayor Dyer gave us an opportunity to present to him. And we believe that this is the opportunity for us to present ourselves and make ourselves known.
Awesome, thank you so much.
No problem. Okay, anybody else? Okay, but listen, thanks a bunch for coming, and then once again, we'll be in contact. And, you know, I think some of the other mayors that I've been speaking to regionally may have a definite interest, so we will continue communication, but thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much for the opportunity and for your time. You all have a blessed day. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation will be provided by our Army Corps of Engineer partners, and they're going to give City Council an overview of the Coastal Storm Risk Management Study project. It's just an update. This is basically a presentation on draft alignments, on where we're headed and what things could possibly look like before they start their public engagement process. So before they engage the public, they wanted to give the City Council an opportunity to get a sense of what we'd be presenting to the public. The next voice you'll hear from here on out will be Keith Lockwood, Chief of Water Resources Division for the Army Corps, and also Kristin Mazur, who is the Coastal Risk Management Program Manager for the Army Corps of Engineers.
Welcome.
My apologies, CJ Bonner is going to kick it off before we hand it to them. So CJ, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Vice Mayor, members of council. Mr. Haney, as Mr. Haney said, my name's CJ Bonner. I'm the Technical Services Program Manager for the Stormwater Engineering Center. With me from Public Works today is Amanda Mattson, who is the City's Project Manager for the Coastal Storm Risk Management Study, Tony Utterback, who is the City Engineer, and LJ Hanson, the Director. As the City Manager told you, we've asked the Norfolk District to come make this presentation to you all in advance of some public meetings that they're looking to schedule over the next couple of months. With us from the Norfolk District today are Michelle Hammer, who is the Chief of Planning and Policy Branch, Cheryl Frome, who's the Chief of the Engineering Branch, Heather Lockwood, the Corps' Project Manager, Kim Joyner-Bathy, the Chief of Programs and Projects, and our two speakers, Kristin Mazur, who's the Corps' Program Manager, and Keith Lockwood, who is the City of, who is the Chief of the Water Resources Division for the Corps, Norfolk District.
Oh, okay, great. That's okay. Okay, great, thank you. Thank you so much, CJ, I appreciate that. And thank you, team, for being here with me today. This is an informational brief, and just to give you an update on where we are, and then just a really rough look at the alignments that we've started brainstorming, and also thanks to Sea Level Ys. So just wanted to have the opportunity to give you an update, an informational brief before we give out to the public. This is our study objectives and overview. Our study objectives and purpose is the same as Sea Level Ys, is to look at reducing the risk to human life and health, safety caused by those large coastal storms that are going to, that are imminent. We want to reduce structure damage because of those coastal storms. And then ultimately, develop a recommended plan for this very complex study with the two watersheds along with the Navy, also the other authorized project, which is the Norfolk CSRM project. This project, the study, is very complex and also going to take longer than the Norfolk one, but going to produce a higher level of design, so it'd be further along after than the Norfolk study was. So total cost is 13.5 million, split between federal and city of Virginia Beach. Also, too, our process is different. So while we really, the information from Sea Level Ys has greatly helped into getting us further along in the study, we have different requirements and different processes based on our federal requirements. Speaking of that process, this is, I'm not going to go through every step on this, this is what you've seen before. It's very long. So to get to the ultimate, you know, the authorized project, it's a long, it's a long process, and where we are is conducting what's called the feasibility study. And also, the next slide shows where we are in that feasibility process, with our next major milestone as being what's called the tentatively selected plan. Right now, we are just working through draft alignments. Modeling is ongoing. It's called the Future Without Project Modeling, and there's a lot of engineering, economic, and environmental modeling. That modeling will feed into the benefits, and the costs will also feed into ultimately the final, the tentatively selected plan. So next major milestone being that tentatively selected plan next July with ultimately a chief's report, which is that, which is the product that will authorize the project, and that is scheduled for May 30th of 2028. So speaking of that modeling, here's just the image of the inundation with the future without project condition. And here are some of the modeling models listed, and I'm not a modeler, but so if you ask questions, I'll have to take it down and get back to you. But beach effects is a model used by engineering and economics, G2 CRM. We're also doing what's called HECS, and the definition is there. And it's, these models have been very complex. This is where we are right now. We are wrapping up what's called the Future Without Project Condition. In order to know where you want to go, what your recommended plan is, you have to know where you are and what the conditions are. And so that's what we're doing now, is to understand what the conditions are without any structural measures or any nonstructural measures, or we'll talk about what potential measures we're considering in the study in just a moment. But the team is wrapping that up, and we want to make sure that we have a very true, valid Future Without Project Condition before we go into the future with project condition and taking some alternatives that we'll see in a bit. And then those would be called the Future With Project Condition and modeling that So potential measures, we are looking at all of the measures right now, and we are nonstructural. Structural to include surge barriers, tidal gates, flood walls, and then also natural and nature-based solutions that will meet our project purpose. Right now, the only draft measures that we have are those draft alignments you'll see in a moment, some of which may be, may not come to fruition after additional consideration for environmental, going out to the public, and then additional modeling. So we did, like I said, we took Sea Level Ys to help us with our draft alignments. Many of the alignments you'll see actually match the Sea Level Ys, or they're very similar. So what we're going to do is we're going to take these alignments and further model them in that future with project condition. Like I said, we're wrapping up the Future Without Project Condition. So starting from here is the slides that we're considering to put out to the public after we further refine. Just wanted to get the opportunity to talk with you and share with you some of what we've done. We did have a workshop. We had workshops with the city team and some agencies, some stakeholders, as well as the Navy, to talk about some of these draft alignments and then considerations for maybe something hybrid, talk about the pros and cons of each. And then the team is taking those, going to model those to see what the outcomes will be. So this is going to be the first, we're going to start with Lynn Haven, we'll go to Little Creek, Rudy Inlet, and then we have some really draft slides on Back Bay and Southern Rivers, and then finally, we have Elizabeth River. The surge barriers are right now considered at Lynn Haven Inlet, at the eastern branch of the Elizabeth River, Rudy Inlet, and Little Creek. This is the alternative one, and this is considering that we can include the Navy and that the benefits will work out such that the, this alternative has proven the most effective. But we do have to, again, coordinate with the Navy, and this is considering both of those facilities, which the Navy also has to agree. It's going to be complex because we'll have to, we'll have to consider operations and maintenance, but that's, that's okay. We'll get there once we figure out what the best alignment will be. And this is the second one, which is a series of floodwalls and several gates in the Lynn Haven River Basin, and it's the proposed, also proposed in the Narrows where the Broad Bay converges with the Corn Bay. The third one, this is very similar to the first one, but it doesn't include the proposed dune beach system at four-story. So again, like kind of a hybrid. This is going into Little Creek. Again, also coordination with the Navy, coordination with the city of Norfolk. They have a project, they have a part of their project that's just, sorry, just west of the, of this area that we're looking at. And so this one proposes a surge barrier at Little Creek, in Little Creek, at the mouth of Little Creek, as well as a, as a dune system along their property and the city's Additional Little Creek slides. This is the second alternative, but it does not include that surge barrier, but it still does impact the Navy facility, Navy property. This is not considering the Navy. This is so in case the Navy does not want to participate, or for some reason, benefits don't work out, but this is the third option for, third alternative for Little Creek. Going into the oceanfront now, there are two existing federal projects. One is the oceanfront, it's actually called Virginia Beach Hurricane Protection Project, that's a federal name. You know, you'll know it as Resort Beach. And the other existing federal project is Sandbridge. And the first one is a, is just the dune system. And then the second one includes the second alternative for the oceanfront, excludes the Navy facilities. By authority, the federal government, the Corps of Engineers does not allow to look at other federal installations, so this is a very unique opportunity in that we have found a legal way to incorporate the Navy facilities, which is really, would be the best solution for both the Navy and the city of Virginia Beach. And the next one is the Rudy Inlet. The first alternative recommends the surge barrier at Rudy Inlet, as well as a dune system, and terminates- and terminates just the southern limit of Croatan Beach. Rudy Inlet, again, with some structural measures. And some of these, you know, that I'm showing you, these are really rough, and they may not pan out to next month. So I just wanted to mention that. They're very conceptual right now, so that we can, we have to take what we have and then consider what may fall out. And before we go to the public, it was imperative that we communicate with you before we communicate with your constituents about potential impacts to the community to protect them from imminent storms in the future. Again, this is very conceptual, taking some information from Sea Level Wise, and then just looking at potential options for Back Bay. And we have some more slides on the Back Bay. These are very, very conceptual. And we're just starting to look at non-structural solutions as well. So that case, it may be more appropriate. Also, Alternative Two includes elevated roadways and two gate crossings with no structural measures. And this one is for the Southern, Back Bay, Southern Rivers. Same as the alignment shown in the Sea Level Wise study that you guys approved and has been completed. And then the second alternative extends the alignment of the intersection of Muddy Creek and Horn Point Road. Again, very conceptual. And then also, West Net Creek, that includes the elevated roadway and gate adjacent to the West Net Creek Bridge. Okay, Elizabeth River. There are also three alignments for the Elizabeth River watershed. And this will also need coordination with the City of Norfolk for the first alignment, which is that surge barrier, which was recommended out of the Sea Level Wise. And, you know, there's opportunities, I think, with coordinating with the City of Norfolk to find the regional solution to mitigation from storm impacts. Okay, so part of the process we do have, we've started environmental coordination. There have been two inter-agency meetings held already to start receiving feedback, because we are going to execute the EIS, which is an environmental impact statement. And that is part, that will be part of the final report. The EIS for this project will be taken considerably further than your sister city, Norfolk, because we're doing some water quality modeling. That will indicate, that will indicate some designs and information about gate closures. And that is also actually just being done right now for the Norfolk project. So, and agencies are requiring more information. Unfortunately, Norfolk was done in a three years, $3 million. And so, which we're now making up some of that, some of that time, in order to go forward. So for Virginia Beach, we're doing a lot of that now, a lot of the environmental coordination, the information needed, which is the hydrodynamic and sediment transport modeling. And I'm getting really into the weeds, but this information will really help indicate, it'll give information that the agencies are looking for right now versus doing it later. And I think it'll really give us a head start. So this is just some information on some of that hydrodynamic and water quality modeling that I think is crucial to such a gem as Virginia Beach with all of our water. And we are working with what's called the Engineering Research and Development Center for this. This was additional cost, but again, we'd have to pay me now or pay me later to get this done. And so where we are, we have started the water quality modeling, as well as the development, the mesh development for the with project design. So that's started. So why it's critical that we go out to the public starting like no later than December or in January is such that the Engineering Development Center can finish that modeling within the allotted timeframe and still maintain the schedule. So coming to you now, got to go to the public and get their feedback on also, meanwhile, concurrent environmental coordination ongoing, such that we can have them models ongoing with our recommended alignments. Not that we're just going to, like, we can't model everything, right? So we need to get feedback on those alignments before we finalize that engineering modeling. And this is our schedule. This is the feasibility milestone schedule for a federal project. And then the timeline and how that's broken out with our next major milestone as being that tentatively selected plan. So the modeling has to happen. The public outreach has to happen in order for us to meet this milestone of the tentatively selected plan. So a lot of action on the modeling and a lot of continued efforts will also be maintained all the way through to an tentatively selected plan. Something I do want to mention also is that we are going to get a higher level cost estimate, but what's required for that is additional engineering. So we're going to take the design to a higher level than we would for the previous, like a three-by-three study that was done in Norfolk. We're going to take this design to approximately 30% for structural measures, and then for non-structural, maybe a little less. But this is required, and this is a new federal requirement for these studies, in order to obtain a higher level confidence in our cost estimate. So that's something that we're going to be doing after the tentatively selected plan. And we're working with, I'm working with CJ and Amanda to get the existing data that we have, which is for, like, all of the geotechnical work that you guys did around the Lesnar Bridge and site surveys. So that information, that's what's needed for design. So we're also doing that, and that's where that arrow, that's what the arrow indicates. Our next steps, we're going to continue our modeling efforts. We're going to start that Future With Project modeling that we mentioned, our public outreach. We're going to have a similar strategy as we did, as the city did for Sea Level Wise, going out to the different communities in the watershed. Felt like that was successful, so we're going to, we're going to do the same. For these surge barriers, we have a technical group coming. They're going to be maybe like later next month, in November. And then we're also going to have the environmental agencies participate in that as well. And that's for the surge barriers. That information, the information that's needed for those is also that modeling that we talked about. We're going to start looking at natural, nature-based features, as well as we talked about one of those proposed measures. And then we're also having an inter-agency meeting. Our next inter-agency meeting is in January. So I'm trying to just continue our progress and so that we can reach our next major milestone. So the final product, we will have this 30% design, which is that higher confidence cost that we talked about. So when we are completed with this report, we will have approximately 30% design for some of these structural measures. And this will be what's called the authorizing document. And this is what Congress needs to authorize the project. Similar to the Norfolk CSRM project, which was authorized, it had a final report that is recommended by the Chief of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And then it'll allow the project to receive federal funding for construction or for design and construction. That was a lot of information. So I'm going to, first of all, I'd like to see if my team would like to offer anything, because I'm sure I missed a lot.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer and City Council. Keith Lockwood, Chief of the Water Resources Division. Thanks, Kristen, for going through. It's a lot. It's very complex. And when I started working for the Corps of Engineers 22 years ago, studies, feasibility studies, would take many years, sometimes over 10, 15 years. And so the three-by-three that Kristen mentioned, completing in three years and $3 million, that came around in Water Resources Development Act 2014 to try to get studies done so we can move and build things. Some of the risks associated with the three-by-three was really came about 18 months of work, because then it was about 18 months of review time to get to that chief's report and that decision document that could be authorized. And so you're putting the risk to the costs, as well as the environmental compliance, and a lot of the engineering as well. We didn't get to do the geotechnical work, site surveys, things of that nature that kind of help with the cost estimate. And so we're seeing, and across the whole Corps of Engineers, some of those three-by-threes that were done now, where some of that effort's happening now, having to go back and do that and update what that cost was estimated to be is now considerably higher. So the City of Virginia Beach is certainly benefiting from that in regards to really, there's more of a sweet spot of this five to six years for a study. And certainly, we've been involved as a stakeholder on the Regional Connector Study. And I think I've been involved with that since about 2015 or so. I'm very deliberate, and we've been doing transportation projects for a long time. They're complex, but these coastal storm risk management studies and projects are even more complex, because they're more novel, and we got to get it right, get the engineering right, get the cost estimates right. One other benefit with the City of Virginia Beach is our involvement with the Navy. So with the City of Norfolk, when we got that study, the Navy was not budgeted to be involved and integrated. So our feasibility study, actually, all recommendation and the comprehensive system leaves out the naval station, Norfolk. And hopefully, you know, we'll be able to integrate with them in the future. But at least for Dam Neck, Little Creek, Fort Story, the Navy has contributed funds to the Corps of Engineers to be at seat at the table and integrate with the city and the Corps. So we're very grateful to be a partner. Took several years to bring a lot of leadership down to make the city's case on the federal partnership and investment here. And so we're excited to continue moving forward with the Virginia Beach CSRM study. Thank you.
Hey, Barbara.
You lost me a long time ago here. We've been studying this for years. And now you're telling me we've got to study for several more years before we can actually do anything? I mean, our folks kind of want to know when we're going to do something. And if I go out and say we're going to have to have another five-year study, I don't think it's going to be very well received. I think I must have missed something. You must be building things along the way.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. Michelle, I don't know if you wanted to jump in, but we have different federal requirements. I wish that we could just take Sea Level Wise and implement it, but there's a federal process, and the models that we use are not the same that was used for Sea Level Wise. And additionally, there is more validation. There's increased design than what has been previously studied. And that was what we were talking about, that higher confidence cost. So there is benefit to the additional time in that we will have a higher design. We do have to have those designs before we can go to construction. So there is time for that.
I mean, we must have stacks of designs someplace, because we've been designing forever. When are we going to come to something that, when people look at what's been happening all around and they know what our vulnerability is, and they say, when's it going to be our turn? And we're not going to have anything done. We're just sitting here being sitting ducks while we're designing and engineering. So please tell me that we have accomplished something.
Yeah, so before council approved the agreement for us to enter into the three-by-three-by-three, which the Congress changed to now a five-year program, more or less, we did brief that we won't be able to use much of the work that we did for the Sea Level Wise. So we basically have to start all over in order to meet the federal requirements and unlock the federal dollars that we needed to build these external gates to help protect us from storm surges. You know, so unfortunately, a lot of the work that we did previously is helpful for us from a planning standpoint, but it's not what's needed for the Army Corps to meet the federal requirements that was set forth from them, from Congress.
Councilmember Hanley, I believe the manager answered your question, but if I could state it maybe slightly in a different way. We have projects that are ongoing. Of course, the flood protection program is ongoing, and we are building those projects, and we are working to those ends. But I'd like to point out one project that overlaps between the flood protection program and the CRSM, and that's the West Net Creek Bridge. We currently show that as a flood protection program project to be funded by the citizens of Virginia Beach. If we want federal funding from the federal government to assist us in this construction, this process has to be followed. In order to unlock that federal funding, this is the requirement that the federal government demands. It is long. It is arduous. We wish it wasn't. But it is. And I will say that Norfolk, you know, on the face of it, it looks like they got off a little easier because their process went a little faster and didn't quite take as long. But on the backside now, they're having to go back and do a lot of the analytical work that the Corps is telling us that they're doing as part of ours. I think what's going to wind up happening is we're going to wind up catching up with Norfolk, at least, maybe not entirely, but we're going to catch up and narrow the gap. One of the other things that was pointed out, and it got maybe a little bit glossed over, but Kristen pointed out that there's a group of experts that are going to come talk from the I-Storm Group. I had an opportunity to meet the founder of that organization. It's an organization of maybe 50 people around the world that know how to deal with the existential threat of coastal storms and what storm surge does to communities like we just saw in the Gulf. This is a really great opportunity that is coming to us to allow us to look at what our requirements are. Of course, we have the pilots that operate out of Lynn Haven, so we have to find a way to meet their requirements. But we also have a very unique watershed where, when the storm surge comes in, it floods a very large area. So there's a lot, there's a lot at play here, and certainly a lot of studying that has to be done so that we make sure we get it right. If we put up a barrier and, or draw it on a piece of paper and the citizens don't like it, then we're going to go back and we're going to wind up having to redo all that work. So I really hope that we have the, that we take the opportunity to kind of look at some of these preliminary alignments. We'll be working with our media department to help the Corps of Engineers. Of course, they have their own media department, but we'll be working with our media department to try and put this out and help people to visualize what this might be. We want to make sure that they understand that. And I think that, while it's frustrating, I think we do have a lot of really good work that's coming as a result of this.
I think, at least for the projects in the southern part of the city, the four that we put on the on referendum, what, four years ago? I think we've lost a lot of credibility with our folks because they don't see anything. They don't see anything happening. And I think when we went out and we said we're going to build these projects within 10 years, that was the wrong thing to do. If we know that we've got all of these studies that have to be done, we really ought to just tell people we can't build anything. I mean, is that what we're telling the people down in Florida and the people over in Asheville? That, you know, well, we were studying it. Sorry. I don't know. I think we really, we've lost our credibility, and I'm not sure how we're going to get it back.
Okay, Jennifer, wait, Josh, and then Jennifer.
Just to follow up, did we know that these studies, that these plans would change from the federal level? So when we did the Sea Level Wise studies and then the work that's happening here at the city level, were we aware of the congressional requirements? Or is that a new thing?
That was a new thing to us. So we weren't aware to what extent they would not take what we've done previously into consideration for what they do for their process, right?
So this is a point of, I guess, clarification, like doing the best you can, but then when requirements change at a higher level, how do we respond to that while also trying to meet the things that we're supposed to do? So I just wanted to clarify.
Councilmember Rouse, if I may. One thing that's important to note is that just to get in this study, as frustrated as we are as the duration of the study, just to get accepted to the study was a huge win for the city. There are communities up and down the eastern shore that would love to be able to get into this program. We did the best we could in preparation to be able to get here. The Sea Level Wise was a, it's a good, it was a good study, and it is definitely helping. I'll let them talk about that. But the point is, we didn't, we weren't in the program at that point. We were trying to get in the program. It took us years to be able to get a congressional authority to be able to get the Corps of Engineers to do the study for us. And so we did as much work on the front end that we could do to try and help this process along. And I think it's helpful, and I'll let you take it from there.
And before you go, I would say as well, the big reason why we got into the federal appropriation to be a part of this, and remember, this is probably going to be $2 to $4 or $2 to $5 billion. The city can't do that by itself. One of the big reasons why we were able to get involved in that was because of the Sea Level Wise study that the council commissioned. So it's not like it wasn't helpful. That helped us make the case where other localities, like to LJ's point, have been articulating, can't make the case because they can't make the case because they didn't do as robust of a study. It is unfortunate that we can't use all that we've done before, but we are going to be able to unlock billions upon billions of federal dollars that we otherwise would have to figure out a way to cover financially within our own resources.
Josh, and then Chris.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ray, and thank you all for your update. And me personally, I just, I view this as a kind of a first step in what is going to be a long process. And I, and I just heard the manager say, and I heard y'all say that our sea level wise studies, even though they aren't necessarily to be relied upon for the for the costing out of these of these, you know, projects, it certainly gives us a leg up because we've done the work already. And so that's not wasted effort. And I think, you know, for in terms of the public confidence, I mean, we're talking about two different things here. What our bond referendum was related to storm water issues, recurrent flooding, intense rain events, and improving our storm water infrastructure. This is a completely different kind of situation that deals with sea level rise and coastal storm surge. So while those two things are related, this is completely different and presents a strategy to combat a different kind of risk. And and I think people should feel confident. I mean, you know, we, we've, you know, we've spent lots of time, effort, energy, thousands of miles of ditches dredged. And, you know, we get our quarterly updates from the the storm water referendum, the bond oversight committee, and and we see the progress that's been made. And we do have work to do. And there have been cost increases and, you know, and it's inflation and pandemic related and supply and labor challenges and all of that. But but but, I mean, we live in a coastal community and we're being responsible here. And we're fortunate to have federal partners engaged to help us. But I think for our citizens, more, you know, to 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 help along with that trust, I mean, I think there's a vocabulary that needs to be developed with everybody. And I mean, people like people looking at these maps, like me just now for the first time, I think we need to understand what a flood wall is and what a surge barrier is. And, you know, particularly for, you know, somebody, you know, who represents, I represent the north west side of our city, a Little Creek and Chick's Beach and all of that, and Cusman Taylor across the way is a District Eight and, you know, the other portion of the Bayfront there. And we see lines going down, you know, city streets in our neighborhoods. So so I think those kinds of things really, really need to be communicated, treated gently, and explained to people and, you know, give people an opportunity to give feedback. And, you know, I hope for sure that, you know, going forward, and I know that this is the case because we've got LJ here, but our CIP projects, our road and infrastructure projects that we're, we're doing along these these major corridors that that we're talking about here, that they keep these things in mind. And and same thing with our count plan. I know, you know, maybe this is a little early, but maybe for the next iteration of the count plan in terms of how we go about our land use strategies going forward. I mean, this, this is all going to be kind of folded in and I'm sure everybody knows that. But I think our citizens should feel good that we're in a position to to be able to leverage these resources and and to leverage the resources that we've already, we've already kind of produced out of our efforts. So thank you.
Okay, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I have a few questions. This is very helpful information. Is the goal of at the end of the study to bring back to the council at that time, the manager, implementation steps that will require a decision in terms of how this will be funded outside of the federal dollars?
That'll, that's, that's internal city work, right? So basically, how the current legislation structured is that we'll be responsible 35% of it, right? You know, so a lot of this is the Army Corps driving this train and council already signed an approval agreement and authorized to be a part of this agreement. So we're going to be riding along with that train, right? Our obligation will be a 35% match on it along the way. They'll solicit our feedback and the feedback of our community. But it is the Army Corps' decision ultimately of what's spelled out in the chief's report at the end. But we'll be responsible for finding our 35% match and then we'll work on council or with council on the funding strategies associated with that.
Good afternoon, Michelle Hamer, Chief of Planning and Policy at the Norfolk District. I just wanted to highlight these milestones. So as Kristen mentioned, the tentatively selected plan milestone and then the agency decision milestone, which would follow the release of the draft report. At the TSP milestone, one of the important questions that our leadership asks us or will ask the nonverbal sponsor, do you support what's been presented today? And that's an informal way to say, yeah, we're in alignment with what's been presented. And then at the agency decision milestone, that's another opportunity to say, yep, we're in alignment. And then as we complete, as we submit our final feasibility study, as we work towards a chief's report, what is required, required is a letter of support. And that's a formal letter of support, meaning that you agree with what's in the report and that based on the best information you have, because things happen, that you intend to go into that next phase, which would be the pre-construction engineering and design phase. And that we would sign another agreement, which is a design agreement. And so it's compartmentalized and that's on purpose, right? You go through a feasibility study and maybe it ends that there isn't a federal interest or it ends in something that you don't support. That's an opportunity for you to say, that's a, that's a gate. I don't necessarily want to go through the next door, but hopefully, we've stayed in alignment during the feasibility study that we are, you know, in alignment and we can go through that next gate, which is a design agreement. And then when we're able to, we go into what's called a project partnership agreement, and that's leading to construction. So there's multiple gates that you're able to agree to participate in to move on to that next step. I did want to, oh, I'm sorry. Let me let you finish.
Yes. So just, I think it will be important. The other council members have mentioned that is with so many financial constraints here, if we were looking at $3 billion to $4 billion, I know as a resident of Virginia Beach, when we saw the news break for Norfolk, many people had hadn't seen those type of numbers. How quickly within this flow diagram will we get a number that the public would be able to have some level of confidence in as it relates to the whole? And then the 35%, I know Mr. Manager is saying that's an internal discussion. But if you all come back and say it's $5 billion, well, the internal discussion is times point 35 and somebody's got to pay for it.
Absolutely. So ultimately, by the time we get to the final feasibility report, which is not on here, but on, I believe, I'm sorry. When we get to the submission of the final feasibility report, so going to senior leader briefing, we would have that, we would have that 35%, I'm sorry, 35%, we'd have that level of design where we'd have a confidence. And I just want to speak to the confidence, why that's important, and I'll get to that in a second. At tentatively selected plan, we will have a level of design. It will not be 35%. It'll be 5%, 10%, which means there'll be some flexibility or some difference in that cost. And then as we move through, we'll invest that time. So we have about two years between the TSP and the ADM, where we are investing that additional time to get geotechnical borings, to do some H and H modeling, so that we can inform the design and get some higher level of confidence of what that cost is going to be. And so along the way, we can certainly provide updated briefings to let you know where we are, so it's not a surprise. It would also be included in the draft report. After the tentatively selected plan, within approximately 60 days, we go to draft report. That goes to public review. So that's consumed by the public to provide public comment, which we then address when we go to the final feasibility report. And going back, one, why that is important, I think we've talked through it. So the chief's report, which we ultimately get to, is what Congress needs to go to the Water Resources Development Act. That's how they codify the cost for the project in a Water Resources Development Act, which comes out approximately every two years. So in our timeline, we're expecting that it would be included in the 2028 WERDA if if they have one. That's generally the expected timeframe. Why the higher level of confidence is important is it, it again codifies that cost within that law. It will, we are allowed to add inflation because, as you know, inflation happens every year. It's impacted by the world. But then we don't have a lot of room around that to adjust for any other unforeseen things. And so we need to have a higher level of confidence so that we don't exceed what we expect that cost to be.
And lastly, Councilmember Shoren brings up good points in terms of the difference between what we're doing internally with the bond referendum and then this focus on coastal storm surge, sea level rise. And with the recent storms, my brothers in Jackson, I have some family down in Florida watching them leave Tampa, being that we are extremely coastal, I really have some concern in terms of, and maybe you can assist there, the level of collaboration with our manager's office, really on a yearly quarterly basis, because we're approving projects. We have a project that's in our budget for Rudy Inlet and the public has asked for green space. Yes, we're, yeah, we're looking at upwards of a $60 million park. I couldn't imagine building a $60 million park and then getting to 2027 and you all tell us you're going to put up surge barriers, all these things that could impact that public investment. So if you could just speak to that and then I'll, I'm done. Thank you.
Councilman, if you're comfortable with me making the addressing that, Michelle can certainly talk about their side of the House. From our side of the House, we're partners in this with them. We're partners in them in terms of funding, but we're also partners in the room for most of the decision making steps and and how we move forward. We are looking at the development as it comes along. Everything that we're doing, to your, to your point, Councilman, we're looking at Shore Drive Phase Three, the project that we're getting ready to kick off in your, in your area. We've actually folded parts of our flood protection into that to protect that. Likewise, any CIP projects that we're developing, we're looking at flood protection, coastal storm resiliency, and all of the other elements that are at play. And I didn't mean to ask you to sit down, Michelle, but I just wanted to let you know, that's not really their role to look at what the city is doing in terms of development. That's on, that's our obligation to make sure that we're being proactive and making sure that our development is is consistent with what they're doing and with what we're doing on our other projects.
And then as a short follow up from your team, have you all looked at Rudy? Do you understand, like, what kind of storm surge would we be able to handle today in terms of that area before that whole area was underwater? Do you all have that type of?
We had done some initial modeling. That was a detail that I went into about that future without project. So the future without project modeling shows the type of storm and the inundation and impacts from a storm without any project whatsoever. So that modeling, that modeling exists. And then the modeling will happen, that'll show the future, I'm sorry, the future with project. And then, so if we propose a surge barrier, like what would happen there? And then, and so to all the points, the designs will, designs will be ongoing as we continue to collaborate with your team and come back to you so that you can properly invest in that green space and that park. And it can be a collaborative effort versus, versus us coming in and ripping up a $60 million park. So, or recommending that. One more thing, I'm so sorry. As far as the storms that are happening, the devastation that's happened, things like Katrina, those, that devastation in those projects happened after the disaster. And it's really unfortunate. And so Norfolk and this project, these are pre-disaster projects and that is a huge opportunity. So the city of Virginia Beach is getting out in front of the, in front of the disaster to protect your citizens versus waiting for something to happen and then going, okay, now that, now that we have all this devastation, you know, life lost, damage, you're doing something about it beforehand. And there is a process for, you know, damage funding, but you don't want that. I don't want that.
Thanks. I just wanted to echo Mr. Hanson's remarks on how collaborative we are. We're so well integrated. We're meeting on a quarterly basis at a minimum at a higher leadership level. We do project review meetings, I think either next week or the following, we're meeting. And then we also, so I have, within my division, I, we have the planning and policy branch that Michelle is chief of. We have operations, so our, all of our navigation and dredging projects falls within the Water Resources Division and then regulatory. So a lot of projects that you mentioned like that would go through that review process. So we, we see it and we actually talk about it on all those different kind of business lines. And then, but, you know, on building things, so we're still ongoing on other projects that are already authorized and moving forward. So next year, you'll see Virginia Beach Resort Beach be be fully renourished from, as we do the deepening of Atlantic Ocean Channel. Sandbridge Beach has, has federal funding, so that'll be the next year. So those projects are getting their next nourishment cycles for protection for coastal storms as we continue these studies. So it's, it's kind of good on the timing with that as well.
Okay, Barbara.
You said Sandbridge Beach has federal funding. What is that? I know that they've got their SSD, but they paid for that.
No, we received, we received the federal cost of the federal appropriations to do a renourishment for Sandbridge Beach. So that'll
People at Sandbridge are going to be glad to hear that because they've been paying it in the SSD.
Councilmember Hanley, that's the cost participation. Similar with Big Beach, the Army Corps kicks in a significant portion of it and the City General Fund kick, tip dollars of general fund money kicks in the other local match. So just like on Sandbridge, that's the same thing we do there. The Army Corps kicks in a giant share of that project and then the city's SSD provides a local match for it.
Well, I just wanted to mention what you have for this study. It is good that you have the Navy involved as well as the Army Corps. So like you're saying, it is a win-win, even though it looks long, but having those right up in front can make all the difference. So thank you for your report.
Thank you. Anyone else at this point?
Let me say, it is very frustrating, you know, dealing, you know, with agencies that have stringent requirements above our own. I hearken back to a number of years ago where on Lynn Haven Parkway between Indian River Road and Centerville Turnpike, there was a piece of wetlands there. And it would just made sense, you know, to, you know, build the road straight through. And if I'm not mistaken, it was the Army Corps that really objected to, you know, opening it up. It took years, I think it took decades to finally get that thing open and it improved emergency response time to, you know, that part of the city. But once again, and just, you know, dealing with, it was a very frustrating process for that little project. But when you deal about this, and I think we're going to be talking about another project a little later today, you know, that has similar frustrations for us, you know, where you can only play with the cards that are dealt to us. Okay, thank you. Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation will be presented by our Parks and Recs team. First is to go over the Urban Forest Management Plan, which was last updated in 2014. And this is going to be presented to you all today for a vote. Staff's going to give you a quick overview on it. The second component of this presentation is to go over the Urban Forestry Mitigation Plan, which was an assignment provided by council in reconciliation for us to come up with a plan on how we're going to find some, spend some urban mitigation funds. So at this time, you'll hear from our Parks and Recs folks about the next steps in these processes.
Welcome, Michael.
Good afternoon, everyone. Michael Kirschman, Parks Recreation Director. I'm going to turn this over very quickly to Fang Frenchis and Brooke Costanza. I just wanted to mention two things. And that is, you will not find a more dedicated professional staff that works tirelessly to protect and maintain our tree canopy anywhere in the country. We have that here in Virginia Beach. I will also say that we're very fortunate here that we are leaps and bounds above other cities in terms of the data that we have. So we have really good data to use when it comes to tracking and monitoring and assisting us in our tree canopy efforts, as well as this top notch professional staff working towards that. Unfortunately, that doesn't automatically mean that new trees are growing faster than the rate that they're being lost. But it does mean that we really have some great assets here in terms of staff and data to move the needle. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Fang Frenchis, who you all know, and Brooke Costanza. And they're going to run three, through our Tree Mitigation Plan and Urban Forestry Management Plan update. Frank?
Thank you, Michael.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. We are here to talk about trees, which is great, following the discussion you just had about sea level rise and recurrent flooding, because the green infrastructure of these trees, we think, is one of the tools we need to use to get through any future sea level rise and additional problems. I'm going to spend some time after Brooke talks to you, the City Arborist, Brooke Costanza, she's going to talk about the Urban Forest Management Plan. As Michael mentioned, it was adopted in 2014. We have an update available that you have on your agenda for a vote tonight. And she's going to talk to you a little bit about that process we went through. And then I'll come back up and talk to you. And then I'll come back up and talk to you about the mitigation plan and what we're planning to do with all the mitigation funds that we've currently started accumulating. So with that, Brooke.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm just going to jump right into it. So like Frank said, we have done an update on the Urban Forest Management Plan, and there are a few aspects to it. So two things we wanted to do, well, there's two main parts of it. It's basically what we found and how we're going to get to the goal that we have, that we've come up with. So in what we found, it's a question of why we're doing it and also what the data says. So why do we need an Urban Forest Management Plan? We like to talk to our constituents about how much money trees save our city per year. As you can see, stormwater and property value are the two major, are the biggest money savers when it comes to the urban forest. $200 million per year in Virginia Beach on property value and $142 million a year in stormwater. Overall, the ecosystem services for our urban tree canopy is $446 million per year. So that's why we need to do these studies, so that we can track it. So what did our urban tree canopy analysis say? In 2012, which is a part of our 2014 Urban Forest Management Plan, so that we had a canopy of 41.7. 2018, we did another study. It went down to 40.3. We just did a flyover this past March in 2024, and that is at procurement in order for us to get that done. So as you can see, we did lose 1.4% of our urban canopy in six years. That's over 2,000 acres. That's 220,000 trees, roughly. So the Urban Forest Management Plan was adopted in 2014, and we would like the update to be voted on tonight, but the one in 2014 gave us a goal of 45% by 2035. We've actually moved those goalposts by 10 years to 2045 because we have had some loss in our tree canopy. So we wanted to include this slide so that you could see the tree loss in each one of your districts. As you can see, the most percentage of tree loss is in the north, in the northwest part of the city. The least amount is the southern part of the city. A lot of this is on private property. Yeah, just wanted to give you a second to take a look. Tornado had a little bit to do with it, yes. So how do we get to 45% by 2045? So the Urban Forest Management Plan update has what we're doing. So we keep doing what we're doing, what's going right. And then it also has a future considerations, and all of these are recommendations. So the first kind of bullet point there is, are things that we're already doing. So continuing with the tree inventory, which we have over there to your right, as you can see, we've been mapping a lot of trees and keeping track of what we've planted versus what has been removed. We want to identify available parcels for reforestation. We do have a number of trees that we have planned for planting this year. We want to continue with tree loss mitigation. We have, you know, any city trees on, on city property that are being removed by the city have to be replaced. And then we also have been, I've been working very closely with Virginia Beach schools with our educational programs, expanding our Arbor Day, working with, with Bridget Mariano over there, and creating tiny forest projects, which we're going to expand throughout the years. And then also targeting public lands. I actually got an email from someone in the Navy asking about how to make a tiny forest a couple weeks ago, which is pretty fun. So our future considerations, we really want to incorporate the development community and other city departments, like the Planning Department, to really drive home how important the urban tree canopy is and work together to see how we can do replacements. We want to incentivize tree protection. Again, these are just recommendations. So especially in the southern part of the city where people own large swaths of forested land, maybe giving them some kind of incentive so that they can keep, they will keep that forested land. And then also establishing a tree protection easement program that's basically giving property owners, maybe, you know, people who have single-family homes, some kind of property tax relief for keeping trees on their property. So with the plan, we did do internal review and public engagement in 2021. Most of the departments in the city, as well as our consultants, sat down and started coming up with ideas about the plan, and that's where the assessment, the management and collaboration came together. Those are kind of the three parts of, of the plan. Assessment being the data, the management and collaboration being how do we get to our goal. We did an internal review, so once we came up with a really good draft, we sent it internally to the different city agencies, and they came back to us with comments. We did adjust the document based on those comments. And then, once we came up, or once we adjusted it with the internal review, we, we gave it out to the public. We had it online available. We also had two meetings, as you can see up here with the public. We had surveys online, as well as handout surveys. As you can see, there's one of the questions over to the right, and I also have presented this to many civic leagues throughout the year. We got almost 100% positive review. I believe there is one person who is concerned about construction and tree removals, and that was one comment that we get, got overall, everybody really, really supported it. So, that being said, we would like your support and your vote to be, for this to be incorporated with the larger city comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Okay, Kirsch, and then Michael.
This is, just on its face, a little scary in terms of the issues of development. And just briefly, lancing this, just looking at the districts, and I think I skipped ahead a little bit. I'll hold my question, I skipped ahead a little bit. I'll let you do this one, but it's about the replanting and kind of that ratio.
Okay. Should we, Frank to go ahead, and then questions after?
Mayor, do you?
I have one, just real quick, if I could.
Okay, Michael.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
You're going to hold?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for sharing this with us. It is concerning that we're at this, that we're experiencing, in some cases, the loss of the urban canopy, which is something that we rely upon for many different things, including flood mitigation, including healthy air, including recreation, including urban heat pooling. I don't have the right word for it, but basically that. And as a result of all the benefits of preserving trees that we're aware of, and the need to balance this with our affordable housing needs, with our general housing needs, with the needs of, you know, our economic needs and other things, it's a tough balance, challenging for any community to get it exactly right. But I think we're, we want to make sure we're at least maintaining, if not growing, this canopy. And one of the things that we have worked on, and so I'm going somewhere with this, and that is that previously, we have asked the General Assembly to allow localities the authority, in some cases to require the preservation of tree canopies, including on private property. And obviously, this is a limited authority, and it's one that would need to be used very judiciously and carefully. But that is legislation that we have sponsored as part of our legislative agenda at the request of, and with the support of the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. And I would like to know, either now or later, and I think Mr. McKenzie was here, I don't see him in the room right now, if that's something that you would consider to be a potential effective tool? I didn't hear that mentioned. So would that be an effective tool in helping to preserve this canopy and something that possibly we should consider as part of legislative agenda?
So Frank is definitely going to mention, especially when it comes to mitigation aspects, something that may be coming up, and I do agree with that as personal, as a personal choice and as an arborist, that if we do have more leeway in controlling the removal of trees, of course, that would obviously help us with our tree canopy, so.
Well, I'm sorry, just as a quick follow-up, I would like to say, I'd like to ask Mr. McKenzie to touch base with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation and find out what legislation may be advancing in the upcoming session, and possibly, possibly it should be something that we could consider as part of our legislative agenda process.
Patrick, then.
So the slide four. So it looks like, I wanted to kind of ask you about a number more than anything. So when I look at it and I see District One, you know, it's 32.65, and then it's down 2.5. And then, then I look at others, Mr. Taylor's, you know, it's 48.64, and then it's down 2. So that, that percentage is more, or his loss than mine, right? Do we know, like, do we have a quantitative number of what all of those equal?
Of what all of this equals for the whole city is 1.4% of the, the urban forest that we lost.
You want total number of trees? Thanks, yeah. Yeah, I'm a firefighter. I like things to be like numbers, you know, if I missed it.
A number, number of trees per council district?
Just total number of trees. That would be okay. Yeah. I think it's on page three. Three. Page three. There it is. Got it. 219,000.
219, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry to be a problem. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Costanza. Michael, thank you very much for the report. I really enjoyed reading it. And, and, you know, a couple, a couple numbers popped out at me, actually, as I was reading. And irrespective of council district, I know that, and from the work that, that I was privileged to be able to join, Councilwoman Henley, many years ago, or several years ago, with the Forest Conservation and Forestation Initiative, is the work that our urban forests do in particular, in terms of air quality, reducing heat islands, and flood mitigation. So they do outsized work, and most of our urban forests are located in and around the Lynn Haven in our city. And I was looking at, I think, out of the total 3.2% of tree loss that we've sustained over, it looked like 2% of that 3.2%, so 62.5% of the overall loss came from Lynn Haven watershed. And so that just stuck out to me, and that's, that's a lot of residential in that area.
Yes.
And then, and then also, another thing that stuck out to me was looking at the tree canopy loss by, I guess by zoning district. 78.1% of the tree loss, the tree canopy loss, came from single-family residential zoning districts.
Correct.
So a lot of, I mean, I know, really, everybody gets upset when, you know, there's, there's a commercial development that happens and people take down trees. But we're talking about 78% of the tree loss that we've experienced, that's happening in neighborhoods.
Correct.
That's happening in backyards because people don't want trees shading their pools. That's happening in front yards because they're causing issues with driveways and sidewalks and God knows what else. Or it's just people just don't want trees in their yard because the grass doesn't look as good when the leaves are falling on it. So, so I think, I mean, you know, as much as, you know, commercial development certainly comes into play, it looks like it's only 6.4% of the tree loss, but we're somewhere in that neighborhood. But the lion's share, I think, is just, you know, it's on us. It's individual responsibility. And I think we need to, we need to be mindful of that. And, and I would love, love to see, see us working with, you know, the building industry and other, the development industry to kind of, to see how we can do some legislation on citywide replacement standards for new site plans on private property. I would love to see use of off-site tree mitigation banks or some sort of tree fund where if you can't replace it on site, you're paying into or planning elsewhere on city property. I would love to see the use, and this is one of the reasons why I asked all of you, and thank you for your support, on the Stormwater Management Implementation Advisory Group, to incentivize the development community to, you know, maybe find ways to leave more open space or more tree canopy than they would otherwise be required to when they're engaged in development initiatives. And I'll give you one quick example. Nonprofits are really useful, too, because we have friends of live oaks, and they were extremely proactive and engaged on working with Public Works to save mature live oaks along the Phase Three, Shore Drive Phase Three Road Improvement Corridor, and they will likewise be that way on the, on the Phase Four corridor, and they did identify trees to save. Same, same thing with Dominion and utility replacements and such. So engaging nonprofits. And, and, and Ms. Costanza, we met earlier this year, and we talked about some of the unfortunate challenges that exist. And so alongside engaging multiple departments, I think our courts also have a role to play here, too, because if we're, you know, if we're going after people for cutting down trees, and we, on city property, and we take them to court, we're in front of a judge who just saw a murder case or a, or some sort of other violent crime or something else, and then you've got somebody sitting there who cut down some trees, and that's, that's very serious, but comparatively speaking, it's tough to, you know, it's tough to enforce. And so I just want people to know that that problem exists. So thank you for your work, and sorry to be long-winded, but I just really appreciate the effort.
Okay, before we get to work, Patrick, did you have something?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted the council to know that there's still probably about another seven slides that the staff has to go through and explain some of the mitigation plans that we're working on.
Okay. I thought we were done.
Get work.
Let's go through the slides, then we'll come back.
Is that okay, Chris?
I love trees.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with a little bit of shocking news and then ease the pain and talk about how we're trying to handle the situation. So during 2012 to 2018, tree loss was outpacing tree gain by double. So if all we do is plant trees and try to fix the problem, and we assume that we're still losing trees at about the same rate, which I think my gut tells me we probably can, we would have to plant 76,000 trees per year till 2044 so that we would have 45% by 2045. If we can somehow stop the, the loss and just build from this point forward, we would still have to plant 40,000 trees a year from now till 2044 to reach 45% by 2045. So you can see, it's a pretty daunting task to think that we're only going to plant trees and be able to solve the problem, but it is a very important tool in the toolbox to plant trees, and we need to focus on that. And that's not just city trees, that's everyone in the city planting trees, public trees, private trees, whoever plants trees, and trees that grow from a bird that drops a seed. Okay, this council's been very proactive in this situation. They've, we've, for years, they've had to get permission to remove a tree from city property, from the city arborist or from my spot in the organization. We've got codes that relate to planting trees in parking lots and, and street trees in neighborhoods, so it was a very proactive council that did things like that. In 2020, another very important policy was put into place. The city council said that the city will replace every tree that the city removes from city property. We've also got a proposed new ordinance that touches on something that's been mentioned, and that is developers currently, we have a lot of voluntary compliance when a developer has to remove city trees to build their development, to put in driveways or whatever they want to improve views, whatever they want to do. We have voluntary compliance, but there are some developers that don't like to do that. So we've been working with planning on an ordinance. I think we gave you all some, a CCSR back in March that talked about this ordinance. We slowed it down just a little bit so we could do the Urban Forest Management Plan, but we're meeting with planning again in early November, and we may be able to bring you an ordinance later this year or early next year. So tree mitigation funds, 1.1 million was really the focus of attention when we got paid by Dominion for their work on the Seaval Easement. But I just want to let you know that we've been using mitigation dollars for quite some time to plant trees, and we went back to 2023, 2223, and we had about $51,000 in mitigation funding from various sources. Some of those were illegal removals that people paid us for, some were developers, and some were some CIP projects that Public Works gave us money to replace the trees they removed. Then in FY 2324, last year, Dominion, as part of the purchase of the easement, also included a $1.1 million payment for about 40 acres of tree loss that they removed immediately when they, when they took ownership of the easement. In addition to that, we worked with them on what they call danger trees. They're outside the easement. They're outside the easement, but they could still impact the lines and they gave us about another four hundred and some thousand dollars. So total from Dominion, we got one point five million. In addition to that, we got seventy-four thousand in various mitigation payments from, again, illegal removals, small projects that people were doing, um, where they were giving us funding. And then there were two Parks and Rec CIPs and we think that this is going to be the trend moving forward is that when a capital project removes trees, they're going to have to set aside funding to mitigate those trees and it'll go into this fund that we've created. It's important to note that this fund is now a standalone fund, rolls over from year to year and we only appropriate what we think we can use each year and whatever we don't use rolls back into the fund again. So this, this fund could be self-sustaining going into the future. This year so far, we've also collected about another hundred and fifty thousand in mitigation commitments. Some of them haven't been paid, some of them are ongoing payments, um, but that's so far what we've gotten going for this year. How does that relate to our tree planting? So in FY twenty-four, before FY twenty-four, we planted about seven hundred and fifty trees a year. It's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of trees and it kept our arborists busy in the winter months, busy planting trees and they were still doing all of their, uh, tree assessments and hazard tree stuff and all that at the same time. Last year though, we got the Dominion payment. There was a lot of, uh, concern from Mayberry, Prince George Estates, the Amazon development was starting, there was going to be a lot of trees removed, all in a small area. We committed to planting a hundred thousand dollars worth of additional trees, which is about four hundred trees. And that's what's shown on this map. They're all as close as we could possibly get to that Dominion easement as well as the, uh, Amazon development. So we planted eleven hundred trees last year, which is a lot more than we've ever done. We spent a total of two hundred and fifty-six thousand last year. And again, that was mitigation funds. We have planting dollars in the general fund that are transferred for mitigation of public works and public utilities, uh, maintenance activities. And, um, some of those were grant funds that Brooke was successful in, in acquiring. So here's what we plan to do. Um, this year we're planning on four hundred and twenty-six thousand for tree planting. About two hundred and fifty thousand of that, we can consider came from the Dominion funds. Again, they've all been kind of co-located in one fund, so we're going to try and track the Dominion separately. Um, we're also paying for a new urban forestry position to help us plant these trees. That position was filled in early September and, um, there, we are already hitting the ground running, planning on planting over two thousand trees this winter, which is three times more trees than we've ever planted in a single year, if you take out the extra trees we planted last year for the Dominion easement. Target areas will be neighborhoods that are prone to flooding, urban heat island, uh, or other areas where we've lost the most trees. The purple dots, there's two thousand purple dots on that map. It's really hard to see because a lot of them are close together, but we've already got the locations picked and we're getting ready to start planting in the next couple of weeks. We also think we need to do some preservation and we'd like to use some of these mitigation dollars for that as well. This is a neighborhood off of Pleasant Valley. It's a townhouse community. They really don't have any trees inside the neighborhood. All their trees are along Pleasant Valley Road, right across from the fire station. Sidewalk was really cracked up and broken and, uh, Public Works needed to replace it. We agreed to pay the difference between regular concrete and this flexible pavement called FlexiPave so that we could keep all the trees and put in a new sidewalk that's porous, allows water to go through and the roots can continue to grow and it shouldn't be near, near the problems in the future. This is one at Town Center that we're planning on doing in-house and we're going to purchase two small mixers. It's a very small amount of money using the mitigation fund so that we can do in-house FlexiPave and, on small cases to save important trees, like these ones at the Pembroke BMP at Town Center, the Central Park at Town Center, is what they call it. And then we also want to be able to do some advanced tree care. And advanced tree care is when you have important trees that you want to take care of and you can do root pruning, you can do deep root injections, you can do lightning protection. We have a state champion tree right here on the municipal center. That's the kind of tree you would do that type of preservation work on. And it, and just one example of one that we've done in the past and why we think this is so important is this sycamore tree at the Francis Land House. This tree's estimated to be three hundred and fifty years old, seventy-four inches in diameter. It is a magnificent tree. In two thousand and twelve, it had some structural issues and we were told that we probably should take it down. And we immediately started looking at alternatives. So what we ended up doing instead was we put this black wrought iron kind of chain-looking fence around the base to keep people out from under the tree while we did crown cleaning and pruning for several years, deep root fertilization, new lightning protection. And that tree is probably the most healthy it's been in the last fifty years. So hopefully it'll be around for another three hundred and fifty years.
Okay, Chris, did you have a question?
All right, thank you, Mayor Dyer. So going back to, I guess, page four in the first presentation, it gave us the percentages and I appreciate that background, Councilman Schulman with the kind of, you know, development versus private. What I'm looking at though is it appears the districts that are losing, um, the most amount of trees are getting, in some cases, the fewest amount re- replanted. And so to Councilman Schulman's point, it may make sense because I guess residential's, when you take a tree down, tornado came through, many of those trees have not been replaced and that's the choice of the landowner. But when I look at, um, and we, we are a city, even though we have these districts, you look at District Two and District, which is, uh, does have a heavy agricultural presence and then District Five, which had one of the lowest percentage of trees as a percentage removed, yet they have the largest percentage replanted. And as, if I thought I heard you correctly, you said that was a result of the Amazon taking all those trees down or no? Did I hear that wrong?
Well, Amazon didn't take down that many trees, but the combination of the trees they did take down in addition to the Dominion easement was just double whammy to the neighborhood.
Combination, two commercial, uh,
Yes.
instances, not residential. And so I would just hope as, as we look at where we're losing the most, I don't know if that's a PSA or some type of, uh, communication where we can encourage a long shore drive or along these, I mean, it's Councilman Remick, myself and Councilman Schulman's districts, uh, where we can't afford to lose those trees is what is the incentive to replace if it is private versus, you know, a council decision to give it over to a developer or a large economic development project. Thank you.
Good work.
Can I just, if I could comment to that, those are great comments and great questions. So the difference becomes whether it's private lands and private tree loss versus a city project that owns city land. So where we plant right now is where we have land, uh, where we know there's not going to be a future project. Um, we're not going to go into a, uh, uh, we weren't going to plant trees last year in the middle of Level Green Park because Level Green Park is currently under construction. Uh, and, and so we want to make sure where we plant them, they're going to be very successful. So we spend a lot of time looking at properties where we know we can plant trees where they'll be safe and good and not be impacted. When it comes to loss on private property, that's a lot trickier in terms of, correct me if I'm wrong, we're, it is difficult to mitigate private property tree loss with public dollars and public lands if you don't have the land nearby. So that becomes a significant challenge. I will say one thing, I came, uh, from a city, my previous job, as you know, was in Charlotte. They called themselves the City of Trees. Um, they had over fifty percent tree canopy, but they're growing by leaps and bounds too. And years ago, they, like many other cities, they decided to tackle this beast in a different way because just like here, the majority of the tree loss isn't occurring on public lands, it's occurring on private properties. And so, uh, you can look up, uh, Tree Charlotte, five oh one C three, nonprofit organization. They go and raise money, then they go into neighborhoods and do huge tree plantings on private property. So they're giving away free trees, planting them on private property. The landowner signs a non-binding legal agreement that says, you know, I'm going to take care of this tree, I'm going to do everything I can to keep it going. And their whole goal is to increase tree, tree canopy on private property. Now that's a major undertaking. This is a nonprofit with paid staff, it's funded, it's seeded. Uh, but there's a lot of cities doing things like that because the whole, again, as we mentioned, over seventy percent is coming from private property. We are mitigating public land loss. So when there's a public, public works project or a parking rec project, any kind of project and we lose trees, we're mitigating those on public lands where we can. So it's tough.
And to follow up on what Michael said, in two thousand and eighteen, when we got the data, we immediately started talking to the neighborhoods, the Virginia Beauty and Beautification Commission, the Council of Garden Clubs. So we do have people out there spreading the word. Um, and there are some nonprofits that are already doing a wonderful job planting trees on private property. Lynn Haven River Now has done a project in Ocean Lakes, they did a really great project in Green Run. So we do have nonprofits that are already helping us with it, but it is a real challenge.
Okay, work and then Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you all for the presentation. If you could go back to slide number six. Thank you Frank for everything that you do in education. I've learned a lot from you on trees. So to me, I don't know who the audience is on the question number four, where would you like to see more trees preserved? Because to me, roadways and schools are easy targets. Uh, as I drive down Alaskan Road, of course, when that project is done by, uh, April or May of next year, I'd like to see a lot more trees planted, uh, there. Virginia Beach Boulevard, Independence Boulevard, uh, General Booth Boulevard, all of our major arteries, Shore Drive for sure. That's, that may be our property and/or state property. And I know landlords of shopping centers don't necessarily want to block the retail stores, but it would beautify our roadways if we had more trees along our roadways. And it would help with flood mitigation, of course, as well. And in schools, I know safety is important, but also would help perhaps if trees were next to schools to lower the power bill and, and make the, the schools more beautiful. But I just, they're the, the lowest on that audience, so I don't know how they got that low. But following on what people are saying, whatever we can do, I think, to incentivize homeowners, because if, we have so many homeowners, if everyone would plant one tree once every two or three or four or five years, if they take down one, maybe put two up, then we could, I mean, that's got to be helping us, whatever. And I like that Charlotte program, I think we should try to figure out a way to look at that because if we put tax dollars at it, I know that's hard to justify and record and, and document, but anyhow, I think the more homeowners can do to help us, the more will help the city.
Okay, Barbara.
Well, I have two or three points, but this idea of the homeowners, because I know a lot of folks say, well, I'm taking down my tree because I'm afraid it's going to fall on the house. And so we really need to, as we're going through our ordinances, to redo them, to make certain that when we require somebody to put a tree on a parcel that they are building on, that we've got our ordinances such that they are helped to locate it in a place where it won't be growing, that will hang over the house in the future and cause them to want to take it down. I think it's something we have to be conscious of because individual property owners do have the right to take down a tree on their property and if they feel like there's a danger, that's, you know, you, you can't blame them for that. So if we can have some kind of information for people about if you're going to plant a tree, you might want to consider these things as you plant so that you will not get in that situation in the future. But the ITA proposed plan that you saw a week or so ago, one of the things with that was we know we've got this tree mitigation money from Virginia Power, but we don't know where to plant the trees because we don't want to plant the trees where we intend to build something else in the future. So that's a, one of the major reasons for that particular plan is if we can locate where we want things in the future, then we can know better where we can plant trees and, and things of that nature that will not conflict with what we're going to want to put there. So it's, it's really important as we do any of our plans that we think ahead and determine, you know, what we do expect to have on a property and, you know, where our infrastructure is going to be and then where it does allow for trees. This would be the same thing as using, uh, street trees. You know, we have to be careful that we're not going to, uh, be planting trees in a place where a hurricane is going to knock the tree down across the road and on somebody's car. So, you know, there are a lot of conflicts there that we have to try to avoid as we're helping people and as we're determining where to, to put trees because it's something we want to do, but we want to do it in a fashion that is, is going to look to the future and what's going to happen when that tree gets, gets older and bigger. Uh, a couple of years ago, Frank, I, you know, when we did the, um, Virginia Tech studies, we did do a lot of study in trees, particularly from the aspect of flood control, uh, and the evapotranspiration aspect of it. Because what we overlook or we think, well, trees take a lot of water to grow, but they take up a lot more than they need and so the rest of it goes into the air through evapotranspiration. And I know that we had a lot of data developed from Virginia Tech about what benefits we get from trees, including that aspect of it. And I would hope that we've been able to use that somewhat in our flood control, uh, calculations. Did we ever get all of the data that we were getting from Virginia Tech? And I know we did the phase, the study in two different phases.
I believe that it is, it has started to impact the value of trees when they're doing stormwater calculations, um, but I don't do those myself. So it would be a better question to ask maybe someone from the plan. I can find out who, who would be the best contact. Might be Seth in the planning department who, who would know best how that data has been used, how it has made the, the transition over into impacting development plans. Because that's kind of the question.
We had quite a lot of attention given to trees for, who was that, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, sometime in there. And, and we did quite a lot with the Nature Conservancy and, and Governor McLaughlin at Virginia Tech. And I hope we use that data, uh, because I think what it did was it generated a lot of knowledge for us that we can now utilize as we're going forward with these other ideas. Thank you.
Okay, Amelia DeMichael.
Yes, I just want to compliment you all on what you do with this because as you know, I've been part of the Virginia Beautification Commission for a while and you all take the time not to just say plant trees, but actually identify what type of tree works best in our area. And that is important because just handing out trees, people putting them anywhere isn't good, but you take that time to educate the public and the schools. And on Arbor Day, you have certain trees that go certain places and that's making a difference. So thank you for what you do.
Okay, Michael.
Thank you. Well, as a, I think, nice follow-up to Dr. Ross Hammond's comments about beautification and also Mrs. Henley's comments about replacement of the trees. I would really like to, um, to ask you in your deliberations and then, and as you continue to unfold this plan, to consider the beautification aspect as well. As you know, um, Councilmember Rouse and I were advocates for a pilot, what I would call it, called Pilot Beautification Project on the borders of District Three and Ten that did include some trees. And it received a very positive response from, um, from lots of people in the community and as well as the motorists who use that corridor, which is underserved and in need of beautification along that Holland Road corridor. And so I think this is a really good opportunity as you're moving resources, you know, in, investing resources and into the tree canopy. It's also a great opportunity to think about the beautification of neighborhoods that could really benefit from it and would benefit from it and, um, and have really asked us to be advocates for, um, making sure that every part of the city, um, receives that level of beautification and is, and every person, no matter where you live in Virginia Beach or what your zip code is, is deserving of beautiful streets and, uh, roadscapes and vistas as they travel throughout our city. And I think this is a great opportunity to cross off both of those.
Yes, sir. We agree.
Okay. Anyone else at this point? Yeah, huh?
Quick. I know the Tiff, MCG Director up there. Um, when we, we may have already done this as well, but like, what I see in District One a lot is the old pine tree grows, that's what comes down. And you, I think that picture was of old pines, right? But do we, do we promote that like, hey, instead of an old pine, it's ninety feet tall that you're afraid it's going to snap off? Maybe we plant a, something that's eighteen feet tall? You know, is there, is there, is there some outward, I'm sorry, I'm looking up there. Is, is there an outward, um, public announcements and stuff that would say, hey, why don't you try to do this to help offset?
We can, we can work with, uh, we can work with Park.
The thought about it is, is like, if you don't, like, I don't know that the general public, sound like Councilman Rouse, I don't know that the general public knows or realizes that that is such an ongoing issue that we might be able to help, is that folks, if you take down six pine trees, plant six, whatever, I don't want to say the wrong tree, because I feel like I want to say pear tree, and I know that's the wrong one. I know I've cut a lot of them up with a chainsaw, buddy. I'm not going to say a pear tree. I've been out there on the road at those at two in the morning. But whatever y'all say is the best. I think it could be a good public information thing to get started, just all. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? You know, but, you know, Dr. Ross Hammond brought up the Beautification Commission, and I tell you, I would just like, I think we should all give those folks a shout out, because they got volunteers all over the city. And I tell you, you know, we always, we get a lot of kudos for being a good, clean city. And, you know, I'll tell you what, it's really aesthetically, you know, very satisfying. So, once again, thank you all very much. This is a very important topic to us. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So Mr. Mayor, members of City Council at this time, staff from our Public Works Department, started with LJ Hansen and City Engineer, Tony Utterback, will give Council a overview of the NMO 7B project and give you some updates on where we are and also some of the challenges we've been facing as it relates to permitting and reviews and studies required by the federal government.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tony is going to give a briefing on where we stand on NMO Parkway Phase 7B. If you recall, a couple of weeks ago, we had back-to-back incidents on Sandbridge Road, and there was some concern generated by the community that we were not aggressively pursuing this project. We just want to make sure that everybody has an understanding of where we are today, what process is ongoing, and what steps come next. And Tony will give her presentation, and I'll be available for comments after.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of City Council, Mr. DeHany. As LJ mentioned, I'm going to give you an update on NMO Parkway Phase 7B. So NMO Parkway Phase 7B is located in the southeastern portion of Virginia Beach. The project starts at Albuquerque in Lagamar and will tie into our existing NMO 7A project, which is currently under construction. This project is going to provide a more direct access for the Sandbridge community to Interstate 64, as well as Centerra Princess Anne Hospital. I'm going to start today by talking about the purpose and need of the project, followed by an overview, and then the current status. Starting with the purpose and need. The purpose of the NMO Parkway Phase 7B project is to provide safe, reliable access and connectivity to the Sandbridge community. These pictures right here are what LJ was just talking about. They all were taken this year. These next slides I'm going to talk about are all issues with the existing access to the Sandbridge community, and they're all going to be addressed with the new NMO Phase 7B project. Starting with access, the only public access to the Sandbridge community is Sandbridge Road, which makes Sandbridge Road the primary evacuation route. If Sandbridge Road is closed due to flooding or an accident, the only emergency detour is through the high-security Naval Air Station Oceana Dam Neck Annex. We know from past experience that access to that base can take several hours to obtain, and not to mention that we need to station City of Virginia Beach Police along a detour route on that base. Safety. Sandbridge Road is 5.4 miles long, so two-lane roadway with no shoulders and ditches on both sides, as you can see from this photo. The area along the road features homes, businesses, the Back Bay National Wildlife Refuge, cemeteries, and a church. All of those would be impacted by a project along Sandbridge Road. Approximately 60% of Sandbridge Road is within the FEMA 100-year floodplain, and that ranges between 3 and 5 feet in this area. There have been 19 instances of roadway flooding between June 2021 and April 2024, according to Waze. The map you are seeing is from our Recurrent Flooding Indicator map. It is showing the 100-year storm for the Sandbridge Road area. That is 11.34 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. In the future, with 1 and 1/2 feet of sea level rise, this is what Sandbridge Road would look like. There were over 100 crashes reported in the Sandbridge Road area between 2019 and 2023, according to VDOT crash data. 35% of those total crashes involve vehicles running off the road. And while we do have the curve warning signs placed along the curves on Sandbridge Road, the data suggests that high speeds and the lack of shoulders is contributing to these vehicles running off the road. When there's no shoulders along a roadway, it's very easy for a car to not be able to recover if the tires are to go off the edge of pavement. Fire Station 17 and the Sandbridge Volunteer Rescue Squad are located in the Sandbridge community. And while the city and the Navy do have a general order to allow City of Virginia Beach emergency vehicles to use the back gate of the Dam Neck Annex, there is no alternative public route for medical emergencies. So if a person needed to drive somebody to Centerra Princess Anne Hospital, which is located 12 miles west of Sandbridge, and the road is closed, they would have to go to the fire station to be able to access the back gate. Now I'm going to talk about the project's history. In 19, oops, sorry. In 1968, the city began to study direct connections to the Sandbridge community. In 1971, an east-west corridor was included in the city's master transportation plan, as well as the city's comprehensive plan in 1979 and 1985, and all the plans thereafter. Between 1990 and 1991, all of the right-of-way was acquired for the corridor. And this is before Back Bay National Wildlife acquired property. The refuge began to acquire property in 1992 and continued through 2000. They acquired parcels adjacent to the city-owned right-of-way, both to the north and south of the corridor. Between 1999 and 2003, there were several studies that were conducted, looking at Sandbridge Road and NMO Parkway Phase B corridor, and all of the studies identified the NMO Parkway corridor as the preferred alternative. So sections of NMO Parkway have been under construction over the last 30 years. The first section was built in 1990. It was Phase 5A. It provided connection to the Princess Anne Recreation Center, the fire station, and the library. And then subsequent projects were constructed in 2008 and 2014. Right now, Sandbridge NMO Parkway Phase 7A is currently under construction and expected to be completed by this time next year. NMO Parkway Phase 7B is the final link connecting NMO Parkway from Princess Anne, here at the municipal center, to the Sandbridge area. The NMO Parkway 7B project will be a two-lane, undivided roadway from Albuquerque Drive to the Sandbridge NMO Parkway Phase 7A project, which is just west of McClanahan's Curve, approximately 1 and 1/2 miles. There will be 4-foot on-road bike lanes, 4-foot paved shoulders, a 10-foot single shared-use path on one side of the road. There will be an 800-foot bridge over Asheville Bridge Creek, crossing the creek and sensitive wetlands. All of that will be constructed within city right-of-way. You can see the typical section shown here. And these are some renderings of the project and what it would look like when it's complete. So because the project has federal funds, it is subject to the NEPA process, that's the National Environmental Policy Act. In 2019, the Federal Highway Administration signed a NEPA concurrence form that suggested an environmental assessment-level NEPA document. An environmental assessment is performed when it is evident that there are no significant impacts associated with a project. In 2022, VDOT and FHWA approved at the EA and shared it at a public meeting. Based on the comments from that public meeting, FHWA determined that an environmental impact statement was required. The decision to elevate the level of the NEPA document to an EIS was based on comments related to the proximity of the road to the Back Bay National Wildlife Refuge, potential for impacts to the Back Bay National Wildlife property, and the documented abundance of sensitive wildlife and habitat in the surrounding area. An EIS is performed when it is discovered that the project could result in significant impacts on the quality of the environment. So that EIS is now underway and being administered by VDOT. The study area includes the area circled in orange on this map. It includes communities adjacent to the existing NMO Parkway and Sandbridge Road. This also includes the Sandbridge-New Bridge intersection, where we have a flood protection program project to raise the intersection, build a large box culvert under New Bridge Road, and add turn lanes. That project is now on hold, pending the completion of the NMO Parkway Phase 7B EIS. As part of the environmental process, plans will be developed for two alternatives, the NMO Parkway 7B alignment and the Sandbridge Road alignment. They will compare the cost of the potential impacts on social, economic, cultural, and natural resources between those two alternatives. The Sandbridge Road alternative will include raising the roadway to minimize flooding and improving the horizontal curves where necessary. This is the typical section for the Sandbridge Road alignment. It is the same as the NMO Phase 7B alignment, with the exception the lanes are on the other side. So the current status of the project, this is the process for an EIS. Public agency and, public and agency involvement occur along the way. This is the difference between an EA and an EIS. There is much more public involvement in an EIS. Everywhere you see the orange diamond is where there will be public involvement. The, VDOT is administering the EIS, as I mentioned. They have finished developing the study. They went out to the public at a virtual citizens' information meeting in August and presented the draft purpose and need. And they are now developing the alternative concepts, NMO 7B, Phase 7B project alignment and the Sandbridge Road alignment. So all of this is scheduled to take two years and be complete by mid-2026. So the schedule and budget for the project, this is from the FY25 adopted CIP. The design of the NMO 7B project is at 30%. These constructions start and completion dates are based on completing the EIS in 2026, so we essentially added three years to the project's schedule. Once the EIS is completed, we hope to refine these dates and pull them in to make them occur a little bit sooner. The estimated total project cost is $58.9 million. These are the different types of funding on the project. We have federal, we have state, and then local funding making up the difference. Next steps, VDOT will continue to refine the NMO Parkway Phase 7B and the existing Sandbridge Road alternative alignments. Early next year, they will go to the public to present the preferred alternative between those two. The end of next year, they will have a public hearing to present the draft environmental impact statement. And by mid-2026, the final environmental impact statement will be complete, and FHWA will have their record of decision. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
The question is how important this roadway is. I mean, we all know with sea level rise, everything we saw, and Sandbridge is surrounded. It's a bridge with water on both sides. Folks have got to have a way to get out. And the Navy has been very kind to let us use their base, which they don't have to do. And that could change. You know, things could happen with security. Things could be happening around the world that they're going to have to keep things on lockdown. And so we cannot always depend on them and their generosity and their good-naturedness to allow us to go through their base. We have got to take care of our own problem, and this is really important. So it's disappointing that it's taking so long. I felt like comments Barbara made earlier on this as well. And I know it's not our fault. It's a sensitive place. I've been hearing about this for, I guess, 2004 probably. But we've really got to get it done.
Barbara.
Well, a lot of comments about this area. I remember when we acquired the property for this right-of-way, because the refuge told us, you all let her acquire all that you want to build that road, because we're going to start acquiring property in that area. And so that's when we did, in the 90s, we acquired the right-of-way that we knew we would need to build this road. So we do own the right-of-way. And, of course, then the refuge went forward with their acquisition of more property on the western side and acquired more property and so forth. And all of that was known at that particular time. And I'm hearing that, well, we have to do an EIS because we have to include an alternative. Well, I think when we did the original, whatever we did at that time, we did, we did include the alternative of Sandbridge Road or 7B. And Sandbridge Road, yes, we have made some improvements. We include, we improved the bridge a couple of years ago, and we would be improving that intersection at New Bridge now, but now they're telling us that we can't do that until we do this EIS. So, you know, that seems to be a bit backward. But when you said how many times Sandbridge Road has flooded in a year, and you mentioned how many inches of rain that would be, I think most of the flooding was not caused by rain, but was caused by wind, because this area is impacted by the Albemarle and the wind tides. And the low part of Sandbridge Road floods, well, Sunday, when we had southwest wind all day, our roads flooded. When it turns north, then it goes back out some, in spite of what some folks are telling me now that the wind can't cause it, but it does. And, and that's the fact with Sandbridge Road. If we were going to improve Sandbridge Road as the alternative now, we would have to include raising Sandbridge Road. And that gets very expensive, plus we don't have the right-of-way. I guess the only right-of-way we have along Sandbridge Road is maybe 30 feet. We certainly don't have enough for this type of road that we would need to build here. And with all of the people and businesses and so forth, and the church along Sandbridge Road, there is no way we would ever be able to acquire the property necessary to build a road comparable to what this needs. And so it's really a fallacy to think that we have to use Sandbridge Road as a comparable for this, because I think it's just simply not possible. Sandbridge Road has been there for 100 years, and it's certainly changed. And, and that's what we're looking at with this, this situation. And unfortunately, when, I mean, we thought, we had it in the CIP to build this road, NMO 7B, we thought we were almost ready to begin construction. We had the funding from the state and the federal and the local. And then suddenly, we were hit by this, well, we've got to do an EIS, which means it's going to be put off two to three years, not only to take more time, but that's going to cause the cost to go up, too. And so what we did have as a fully funded project is no longer going to be fully funded, because it's going to get a lot more expensive after this EIS. And it is so frustrating to try to explain to the people at Sandbridge Road, or at Sandbridge, that, you know, we, the city has been trying, and we thought we had it all ready to go, and then the rules changed on us. And, and this whole thing of having to do an alternative and use Sandbridge Road when we know that it's just not even going to be possible to do is it's just not even going to be possible to do is kind of ironic. But it's pretty exasperating because I know this has been a very controversial project for many, many years. But it's, and I think over the weekend, we got some more pictures of accidents on Sandbridge Road. I don't know why, but people have an awful hard time driving on Sandbridge Road. It's no different from Muddy Creek or any of the rest of them, but maybe there's a lot of partying going on at Sandbridge. And maybe everybody's not in, is in a hurry to get there or something because they do get off the road. And this road is no different from all of the other roads in the South, but people tend to drive off the edges of Sandbridge Road more than they do any other road in the area. And then, like I say, this flooding, I'm sure, was caused not by rain, but by the wind tides. And so we're really facing a lot of issues that we have no control over. And it's really hard to try to explain to the folks at Sandbridge that we have tried. But I do think it's important that everybody know that if there is an emergency and it requires emergency vehicles, they can go through Dam Neck. They don't have to wait for that process of getting the police. Because in order to let the public go through back, through Dam Neck, they've got to be, it's got to be at least, what, a three-hour closure because it would take that long for them to get the police and the security in place? Because Dam Neck is a very secure facility, and they just can't open it at the drop of a hat to the public. But if an emergency vehicle is needed to go through, that can go. And I think your point that if somebody needs to be transported to the hospital during such a time, don't try to do it by car. Stop at the rescue squad and get them to do it because they can go through Dam Neck without having all that concern about having the police and so forth in place. And the emergency vehicles can get through Dam Neck, is that correct? If there is a closure?
Yes, Councilwoman Haley, I would just not necessarily say it has to, it's three hours. It could, sometimes they require more than three hours. Sometimes they say a half a day or a significant prolonged closure, but they don't let us say a specific number of hours. You know, but basically, if it's going to be a prolonged closure, there's procedures in place where we can reach out to the NAS Oceanic Commander, and then they can grant us access so long as we can provide security to ensure the route for the public is protected. And then if there is an emergency medical transport need, we do have the ability to work with NAS Oceanic Dam Neck Annex to get emergency ambulances through Dam Neck in critical situations.
Well, it's been a really frustrating position, and I don't know, it's something about the southern part of the city. Seems like everything is awfully hard to explain to people and so forth. And we'll get a shot at it on the 23rd when we have a public meeting to try to explain people, the people that, yeah, we're trying on this Punga Ferry Road elevation project, but we've got a lot of issues there too. There's just a lot of issues to doing any of these projects in the southern part of the city when we're dealing with things like wind tides and roads that have to be raised and building roads through swamps. It's not as easy as it sounds. So I appreciate this briefing, and we'll just keep trying.
Anyone else? You know, I think the word frustrating applies to this and also, you know, the previous discussion that we had. You know, but it's a question, what are we going to do? You know, I don't think there's that many options. But I think, you know, I think we've really got to emphasize something Rosemary said that, you know, this is critical to the people of Sandbridge for a number of reasons. When you have one road and that road has a, you know, potential to shut down, that really creates an immediacy, even though the delay, but let's do the best we can to get this thing going. Thank you. Appreciate it. All righty. Okay. At this point, any council discussions or anything? Amelia, you were involved this weekend in a couple, this week with a couple things.
Yes, I was. Several things went on this weekend. One, the Virginia Municipal League, we had almost over 300 that attended. It was very interesting, and I'm going to encourage our council members to please attend that. We had just two of us, but the mayor came and he spoke, myself. And so many, we even had someone from Pennington, a whole group from Pennington Gap, which is eight hours away. But they came, and this was happening right at our city. But the weather was great. I told them I did a sundance to keep, so that we had beautiful weather. But I just jotted things they mentioned about, which is something that we do, we're looking at diffusing the hyper competitive culture of youth sports. As you know, that is very important here to us. They also talked about hockey, that some people are revisiting the tall parking lots and re, you know, purposing them instead of just building even more parking lots. So that was another little part that they mentioned. And we talked a little bit more about what we need to know, response readiness, airport infrastructure. So a lot of the things that touched on were similar to what we have here. Besides that, and ended just today, oh, the impact of social media etiquette with elected officials and when do you block someone or when do you put them that some people are suing. So that was something interesting, and it talked about AI and cybersecurity and the future of data centers, how that is very important. And we again are leading some of this in Virginia Beach. So those were important on that. We also had a very nice church where we went to, the AME Mount Zion, and there was a proclamation. And again, several of the council people were on that. We were on that, Councilwoman Wooden, myself, and also the mayor. And they made an important comment that will be good for all of us to hear. The church mentioned, so good, Mayor, and you from Virginia Beach, the two of you to stay to the ending of the church service. Many times we get many politicians come through and they leave right after to present. So that's just a little thing for all of us who go out there. And she's 98 years old. Yeah, so she has a lot of history that we plan to capture through our BACC as well.
And then you had HRT.
And then, yes, I would let, because I couldn't be in two places, but my fellow colleague, council member, can you share a little bit about that, Councilmember Schuman?
I'd be happy to. I know Councilwoman Rouse was.
Oh, and you went as well?
I do have something that you can leave.
Okay. Well, thank you, madam. So, yes, just happy to join the mayor and other state elects to kick off the new micro transit ride share program that HRT started in the Bayside area. And for the next two weeks, rides are free. And after October 27th, they'll be $2 per person per ride. It's kind of like an Uber, but you might share the ride with somebody else who's got a common destination to you. And this is, I mean, it serves destinations like Town Center, Pembroke, Centerra Lee Hospital, Virginia Wesleyan, Williams Farm, Rec Center, Bayside Library, Princess Anne High School. And these are neighborhoods like Aragona and Lake Smith Terrace and Lake Edward and Lakeview Park and others in District 4 and District 9. So thank you to council colleagues and to HRT for making the opportunity available and for supporting micro transit. And hopefully, I know we've got maybe some other potential opportunities in other areas of our city that could use a little better connectivity in that regard. So look forward to hearing more about that, hopefully.
Jennifer?
Thank you. I have three things. First, all of City Council received an email from Active Transportation Advisory Committee regarding the draft legislative agenda. And so really, the purpose of the email, threefold. One was to thank the body for incorporating a lot of the work that ATAC has been doing on transit safety and to ask that, or to reinforce that some of the items that are in the legislative agenda, that they offer their support to include support for state funding of the Virginia Beach Trail and support for state efforts to protect vulnerable road users, including local authority to implement automated traffic enforcement cameras. So everybody got that email, and it's, it was partly a letter of appreciation for including and listening to their input and including it in our legislative agenda. So wanted to shout out the work that they're doing and glad to see it making its way to our packet. A second liaison update. So Virginia Beach Public Library, two highlights from yesterday's meeting. The first is on our agenda tonight. We are voting for an ordinance for nighttime use of libraries. And they wanted to stress everyone is welcome at the library. And also, we want to protect, create a safe and welcoming environment by limiting parking and overnight use of grounds. And so that's the intention of the ordinance. To reiterate, it's a welcoming place, and also the library wants to make sure everyone is safe as we prepare to vote on that tonight. Secondly, Virginia Beach Public Library has been recognized as one of the Urban Library Council's top innovators for its environmental STEM play and learn initiatives for young learners. So I didn't, I should have pulled up the flyer to show like the other states and cities that were recognized, but Virginia Beach was up there, Virginia Beach Public Library. So more than 230 library projects covering six categories were submitted from across the United States and Canada for this award, and Virginia Beach was one of the winners. So I will applaud our library. And then lastly, today is the last day to register to vote. So go to iwillvote.com. If you are registered, go anyway and check to make sure your registration status is active. And if you are not registered, today is the last day in Virginia to register ahead of elections. In how many days?
21.
21 days. So thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Amelia?
I forgot something exciting. It happened in District 4. We had, as you know, we have the new basketball court and everything. I got a note saying that Pharrell and his team were coming to do a first game on there. So Friday, and it was all kept hush hush, we couldn't tell many people, but he came out, brought two teams, one called Something in the Water and the other called Cousins. And they played for two 20-minute games. Cousin won. But, but he stayed, sat there, his wife, his children, and many others that came with them, Pusha T, and all the other names. They were out there just, and people could not believe that he took that time to come into community. And they set up, brought their own big bleachers. It was amazing watching how they did what they did. And of course, we weren't allowed to take many pictures because they planned to keep it for next, the next year and hope this would be a launch for the next year doing something like this. So it's the few who could come and see it were really excited.
Yeah, that property is really turning into a true destination.
Yes, it is. It is.
Hey, Barbara?
Last Thursday evening, the Virginia Beach Farm Bureau held its annual meeting. And of course, they adopt resolutions for each level of government every year, and I will have the local resolutions that they adopted in your packet this week if you will look for it. It's kind of coincidental that one of the issues on the resolution says that they continue to support our charter containing a requirement that we have a voter referendum if we change our election system. And it's in our legislative package that we are asking to have the last reference to a voter referendum removed from our charter. And that is not in compliance with what the Farm Bureau was requesting or what I request.
Anyone else at this point? Hey, how about agenda review?
Okay. Of course, we have the public hearings, and we have some speakers on the public hearings. But the ordinance resolutions, the only one that has more than one speaker is K-11, so we'll need to pull K-11. K-1 and K-2 each have one speaker. And that's it. Anybody else have any issues or say anything about any of the ordinance and resolutions? K-11 is the only one we're going to pull. We do have a single speaker on K-1 and K-2.
I'm sorry. I just want to say thank you to the staff and to the vessel reuse disposal foundation on K-2. I'm looking forward to supporting that. I know Councilmember Taylor also has done some work with that group and just the work done by the City Attorney's Office to add some additional protections for our waterways and give us a little bit more teeth in terms of going after some of these derelict vessels. So just thank you.
Chris?
With that, also a shout out to State Senator DeStef. He's also assisted Mr. Provost and I believe Michael last month or month or so. Although you also got involved with London Bridge. So it is a citywide issue. It's not just District 8 or 9. Quite a bit. So thank you as well.
I appreciate all of your reference.
They worked very hard on that. So under planning, number one, beach framing, and that's District 2.
There are no speakers in opposition. I recommend approval. I know the staff recommended denial, but this is, historically, this is the manner that some of the property in that area way back in 1970 was subdivided. And at that time, it was totally in compliance. It did everything it was supposed to do. In this particular case, they just failed to record the plat. And this is in the same fashion that we have dealt with the other properties in that area that had the same situation. And this has been in place since 1970, so it won't change the area at all, and I will be recommending approval.
Number two, Sugar Plum, District 6.
As for consent, agenda?
Number three, Herber Company Center, and that is in District 7.
Item is sufficient for consensus. However, I want to back up to ordinance K-1. I'm going to be voting now on that. I requested some additional information regarding that ordinance. I don't recall receiving it on program.
What's that? K-1.
K-1.
Library. Go back on the, okay. I don't have a plan. And number four on the planning, fourth generation home builders, and that is in District 10. That's fine, if we can say. Number five.
Okay for consent.
Number six.
Consent, agenda consent, please.
Okay, seven, Travis Smith.
Consent, please, consent.
Number eight, ordinance to adopt and appropriate to Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan 2016, the Urban Forest Management Plan 2023, which will supersede the Urban Forest Management Plan for 2015. Is everybody okay with that?
Um, I'm sorry. No, you go, I'll go after Mrs. Haley.
I was just going to comment on item six and seven, that we will just continue to approve the short-term rentals in these particular areas, and we had approved that and so forth. But have we done any kind of analysis that perhaps this proliferation of short-term rentals has reduced our capacity for affordable housing? I think there's a direct relationship because these short-term
because these short-term rentals allow people to make a considerable amount of money on something that probably otherwise would have been rented in the affordable housing range. And it would be interesting to know how many short-term rentals we do have and if that has had an impact on our affordable housing stock.
Okay, Michael?
I have a comment on item L-8, planning item eight, the adoption of the Urban Forest Management Plan. I guess I'm happy to support it, and I liked what I heard today. But I do have a concern, and I thought it was our practice that even though that wasn't necessarily a public hearing, that we just received a presentation just a few hours, a couple, an hour ago about that. Now we're being asked to vote on it in the future.
Want to defer this till the next meeting?
Council wants to. I think it's just a matter of the council's agenda's been packed, and we've been starting at 1:00. It was hard finding time.
I'm not being critical, and I appreciate that. But I would mind a little bit more time to.
Yeah, if council wants to.
Dig into it and.
Report till the 12.
Hey, Chris?
I'm trying to get my thought back now. Oh, to Barb, to Councilmember Henley's point. I think if we're going to look at the short-term rental impact to affordable housing as a liaison along with Councilwoman Rouse and, I believe, Amelia, Housing Services. I think it's also important that we look at the overall rentals because someone may choose to do a short-term rental. But we also, especially within District Eight, where we have high military presence, higher-ranking officials. I think it's important to look at the overall number of renters or homes that we have where people, I had one just in Hutch's district where there was, right on Providence, where we had a ditching issue. The woman that owns the home at the end of the street lives in Michigan. She doesn't actually reside in the house. So I think if we were going to look at short-term rentals, I would also love to look at the number of just rental people that are renting their homes out because they're also making a choice. And what I found, especially just in District Eight and looking at the data we get from the Housing and Services, those rents are typically much higher than what it would cost to buy that home in that community. And so I don't want to put a knock on short-term rentals. They also have property rights. But if a single-family home in Kings Grant sells for $375 and the mortgage is $1,800, but they're starting rent at $2,600, that also does impact the ability for people to afford to live in our communities. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments. And if I could say, you know, last week, I was able to attend the State of the Region, and a good part of the discussion was on this topic. And maybe I recommend that Dr. Organ Wall and Dr. McLeod come in and, you know, and brief us on that, and we can have a full-born discussion on the whole picture.
Thank you, sir.
Worth?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd just like to chime in on the short-term rental conversation because there's no question, STRs do impact affordable housing. It displaces a family from living in a house. And I'm very cognizant of every STR because these two are in my district of where they are and the impact. That being said, the Short-Term Rental Task Force will be coming before us pretty soon with their findings. This was not in the mission to determine the impact of STRs on affordable housing. But it'll be good to get an update from them. And I think, you know, I don't know what study or what metric we can find out how this does impact affordable housing, but it's going to be hard to really find out. But it's no question it does.
Very good comments, host. Okay. Okay, all right, thank you all. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions. 2.237 11A Code of Virginia. As amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property. Discussions or considerations of acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A3, and one in District Two and one in District Six. Public contract. Discussion or award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussions in terms of scope of such contract where the discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A29, and that would be Project Ramp. And then personal matters. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific point of police, public officers, appointees, or employees of public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A1. And that would be council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
To move. Second. Councilmember Lungee?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Patcheson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember McHale?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Schulman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooden?
Aye.
Vice President Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Okay, we are going into recess and to close.